Hello and welcome to Tuesday, May 24th Board of Education meeting. Get this right, one of these days. If we can begin with the pledge. Melissa, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Of course.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the victims in the tragedy that occurred at the Tops supermarket in Buffalo. And I just recently learned of a tragic event in Texas a little while ago, so our houts go out to them all. Thank you. Sorry, just a little difficult. Trying to get that done. Sorry. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive. May I have a motion to move to executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual?
I'll motion.
Jody, may I have a second?
A second.
Pete, on favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And Jan will join us when she gets here. Thank you. We'll be back shortly. Hey, we're back. Thank you, everybody, for your patience on that. If we... Let's move on to number two, the superintendent's report, please.
And I'll keep it brief, expecting some applause after saying that. But welcome, everyone, and thanks to everybody for being here. All of our students that are in PIG classes, you're going to enjoy this board meeting. This is one of our better ones. Got two great presentations tonight, although Mr. Brinker's not wearing a jacket that jumps out across the room at you, as he usually does. So just a few things I just wanted to update everyone on. So just today, actually, the Department of Education actually canceled the US History exam. It was a brand-new exam, and it's just something we found out this afternoon. Basically, they were concerned about some content in the exam. I guess they did it a couple, made it a couple of years ago, went to great lengths to talk about the experts that they worked to create it. But I just, I think they felt in light of some recent events that took place, the recent shootings over Tops in Buffalo, is what they actually specifically referenced. They thought that some of the material might upset people. So they canceled the exam at this point. They have to now go to the Board of Regents to get a request to basically have it exempted from the students, which I assume is probably going to happen. I don't want to speak for the Board of Regents, so... But it looks like they're just going to average out the students for marking periods is what my understanding of the situation is for this. The exam was supposed to be next Wednesday, so now that's going to be a full day of attendance for our high school students. Originally, it wasn't going to be because the exam was taking place, so... Any questions on that? That's, again, that's brand-new just today, so... Just real quick, too, I got to go to... So Erie One BOSI's, as some may be aware, has a little bit of a waiting list right now, about 200 students, not from this district. Apparently, in this district, we do a really nice job of scooping up all the spaces before anybody else can register. We have two very proud high school principals and school counselors about that, but... So they have been looking for more space. And actually, I just visited the Calspan Building last week, which is right across the street from the airport over on Genesee Street. Just a phenomenal space. They are completely renovating it at no cost. And BOSI's is going to lease the space, and they're going to have, like, gaming, like, trainings, like, you can go to, like, video game production and stuff. They're going to have all kinds of great CTE opportunities for kids. So it's just, it's going to be really exciting. They're going to actually bust the kids over from the Harkness Center, which is not far from there. It's right around the corner. So just very exciting. They also said they actually, I think it's 25,000 square feet, and they actually have the potential to expand into another space as well in the same building. So it's exciting. So more opportunities for kids to be able to access CTE programming. Jan, you'll, this one's for you. So I've been working, talking to Sue Whalen in our Food Services Department. So apparently, that piece of legislation is still waiting to be, I guess, voted on in terms of free meals for next year. There is a possibility that we may be able to work something out for this summer as well. So she found, first, the information she got was that we could, but it had to be consumed on-site, and then the person at the State Education Department said that may not be the case. So she's still working on this right now, so if it just... I know you are. I know you are. More to come. So, anyway. So that's all I have for this evening. So again, I said I'd be brief, and I'm trying to stick to that. Are there any questions that anybody had in any of that? Okay. Okay. Told you I'd be fast.
Great. Excellent. Just going to take a moment, Board Presidents' Report. We had our school budget vote last week. I think it feels like it was a long time ago, last Tuesday, and we had the elections. I want to thank everybody for coming out and voting. Again, a big thing I'm looking for is to increase the numbers that we have every year. So if you came out this year and voted, bring five people with you next year, please. I'd like to see more of the community involved in the vote, the voting process. But I do want to thank everybody who was involved. I want to thank everybody who ran. And I want to, I don't think we have any of the candidates that were here. Again, thank you to Vince for being on the board this upcoming year. Thank you to Peter for your three years. And again, thank you to everyone else who took the time to run and be involved. I really enjoyed that day, being with the candidates and being with the board at the count and everything. So if you're ever interested in spending a day with us, come out and hang out every year at the Budget Vote. It's a lot of fun. And again, bring people out to vote. That's all I have to say. We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent's Reports.
Dr. Sivoni? What's that?
Everybody's wearing blue and yellow ties pretty much. Not you either.
Yeah, no, she's making you feel awkward.
Sorry, Matt's not wearing one either.
Hi, everyone. Just, I'll also be brief in the spirit. We had our launch of our new attendance and subsystem. I'd like to thank some of the leaders here that helped with that implementation, just transition. I think it went very smooth. Our IT was also a big help in just meeting with some folks in different departments, helping them get set up, whether they choose to use the app or access it online. It's gone very well. I've gotten some positive feedback on it, and we will be adding some more components to it, allowing staff to be able to access their accruals. And our subs have given us some good feedback, too. So we're excited about that. It just makes a better experience for people working for us as substitutes and for our employees should they have to take some time off. I was, had the pleasure of being able to participate in our final New Teacher Academy meeting this year over at the West Senior Auditorium. It was awesome. Kim McCarthen and Wista collaborated to have just a little refreshments and offered some reflective questions to our new teachers ending their first year in quite a year that they had in transitioning students back. And it was just nice to see, although they look very young, it was nice to see our new teachers there and be able to reflect on their year and maybe, you know, what they've learned. I was looking at some of the Post-it notes, this little gallery walk, and, you know, start with, you know, establish my rules a little bit sooner, stuff like that. You know, some stuff that I remember just working through in first years of teaching. But overall, we are in the middle of our transfer process with our staff and the variety of positions that were added and people being able to transfer in and out. That's been going very well. Big shout-out, obviously, to Kelly Conti and our principals that worked collaboratively on that. There's a lot of detail with that. And just looking forward to a successful end of the school year. Any questions for me? Thanks, everyone.
Ms. Persico?
Hello, everyone. Just a couple of quick updates. Our ELA curriculum audit wrapped up today with our kindergarten grade levels, so we should have an updated report within the next couple of weeks from our associate from BOSI's. We did recently have an update from teacher-to-teacher that was provided to everybody. And it's interesting to see that some of the points were corroborated between both versions. So the ELA curriculum audit, as well as the teacher-to-teacher update. I think what resonates is that there is varied implementation of Readers/Writer's Workshop, and that teachers want professional development and need that extra support in implementing that. So I think what was highlighted was the need to focus on writing instruction across all grades. And it is happening in our classrooms, but not in a workshop-style model. So it's more whole group at this point. The need for vertical and horizontal alignment is something that is wanted and desired by our teachers. And so we are taking all of this feedback into account based on whether it was a classroom visit or the teacher survey information. Elementary principals and myself will be meeting next week to go through all of this feedback, review it, and then work to formulate a plan for professional development for next year, in which we'll begin with an opportunity for all of our teachers of Readers/Writer's Workshop for a summer literacy conference. So we will be detailing all of the information with that opportunity within the next couple of weeks for teachers to have the ability to sign up for that literacy conference. May 6th day-to-day, we had our teachers, that was our last one of the year, reviewed student writing samples, speaking of writing, using the RAD protocol. That was one thing that the teacher-to-teacher consultants found, that RAD was alive and well throughout all of the classrooms, grade levels, and elementary and middle. They didn't visit the high schools, our teacher-to-teachers, since it was more focused on Readers/Writer's Workshop, but they were impressed with the alignment and the communication and the language of the RAD throughout their classroom visits. So we're going to work to kind of interweave those two concepts together. But the District Literacy Committee will get together to review all of the reflection forms that teachers submitted as a result of that May 6th day-to-day. And we will use that feedback to make modifications to the graphic organizers that we use and also to the rubric that we use at elementary, middle, and high. On May 13th, three of our district librarians and I attended a library conference at Erie One BOSI's. It was all about collection, selection, and objection, especially in this day and age where you have books that are being challenged in and around the community across the nation. So it really focused on those things and the students' right to read, have voice, intellectual freedom. So our librarians are going to be doing some summer work around policy regarding objection as well as the digital literacy components of the new standards. We will be also forming a committee here at the district level for any such challenges that may come our way. I also wanted to just give a shout-out to Kim McCarthen for New Teacher Academy. Yesterday, it was a great opportunity for our teachers to get together and have that collegiality. It was nice to see so many people in the audience. Where in years past, we haven't had too many. So that is a quick update since the last time we met. Any questions?
Carm, I have a quick question.
Sure.
ELA curriculum audit, is that just for kindergarten, or is it for...
No, it was K-12. And it started back in the fall, and it just finally concluded today.
Okay, so it's a full K through F audit?
Yes. And we should have an updated report, I would think, within the next couple of weeks.
Great.
I'll share that with the board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Fowler?
Good evening. Just kind of pigging back from what Dr. Sivoni and Mrs. Persico said, it's that time of year, we're starting to wrap things up. This week, we have an opportunity to meet with our related service departments, which includes our speech therapists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, and our teacher of the visually impaired, to really take a look and reflect on the work that has been done, not only this year, but in the past years, and really identify what has gone well and what are some areas of improvement or ways in which that we can grow and develop plans moving forward. This is the first opportunity that we're able to get together in person. We're really looking forward to it, to getting the whole group together and really start planning and looking at what our needs are and how we can grow as a department, excuse me, as a department, and how we can support our students. The other thing I wanted to share was I had the opportunity to attend a workshop, a four-day series workshop that started back in March with our best team, which includes our social worker and our school psychologist, part of our new social, behavioral, emotional, social support team. And really, the workshop focused on developing practical set of principles, structures, and tools for organizing groups and collaborative work. It really was a nice opportunity to join them in this training, so we have a common set of vocabulary, common set of understanding. And it's really important in their work as they work with our teachers, our families, our students, and our staff, and really supporting our students with our most, our most needy students with social, emotional, and behavioral challenges. It was a great opportunity to get to know them and to work with them and to really look forward to creating action plans moving forward. Also participated in the New Teacher Academy yesterday, and just want to continue with a nice shout-out. It was great. It was good to see people. People were energetic. They looked tired, as we all do at this time of year, but also it was a great opportunity just to connect with everyone and really just share that we're here to support them in any way that we can. Office of Special Ed and Pupil Services continues to be busy, and we continue to plan moving forward and how we can help all of our students as well as our staff. Thanks.
I know, I know I'm always looking for different groups of people to come in. But I know we get to see sometimes therapists when we're doing our building tours and all that, but we're not always able to bump into them or that. Is that one a group that we can ever, like, have in to present?
Sure.
How many, I mean, is there a lot, is there, is there a lot of them?
Yeah. Like, one itinerant hearing specialist, you've got, you know, excellent vision specialist, I should say.
All right.
You've got counselors, socialists.
Maybe a few of the leaders would invite them all, obviously, because everyone must come to a board meeting.
Sure.
You know, but I mean, just trying to think of different groups besides just like a high school or a middle school, like, just some other categories.
PTs, OTs, yeah. We can certainly consider that moving forward for the fall.
I mean, I'm always impressed when we visit schools with what they do, but I feel like very limited chance to talk, because we're always moving along. So just throwing it out there to the board.
Yeah.
Or to you and the board, Matt.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Consider that. Thank you.
That's great. Sounds good.
Thank you. We will move on. Now we'll move on to a On My Way to K logo contest winner. This is very exciting. How are we...
Maybe just call him up, maybe take some pictures up here and give him a...
Do we already know who it is?
Oh, he's here, yeah.
Can be announced? Let's see. Zachary Waldrath. Would you like to come up?
You know what, maybe do we want to have anybody, anybody that you brought with you? Any family or Mr. Galli or...
Mr. Galli.
Yeah.
Bring up, maybe you can...
Come on, Mr. Galli. Ms. Greenway.
Ms. Greenway, come on up.
You don't get to get out of it.
I haven't done this in a long time, so we're a little out of practice. I was like, I don't know if I'm supposed to...
See you again.
Hold on, wait. You're not done yet. You thought one camera was done? You got three cameras.
It's so dark underneath there.
It is dark under there.
Pictures come out of there under there.
All right, hold on. Wait, one more. Come here. We need one more picture.
Can we have an example of her?
Yeah.
Do we have, yeah, do we have a...
Yes.
Can we see?
Yeah.
I just, I just realized.
It's super awesome.
Okay.
Good, are you?
When we take pictures, we should send it to the board. It's too dark underneath there.
Yeah, we should move forward.
It's probably the photo we should go. This design is going to be on the front of the teacher's, right kindergarten, and elementary. So we designed it?
We probably could have done it. In hindsight.
So this is Zachary's design, he started the project when I was... Zachary designed this, he was one of the students.
Really? Can I remind you of that? Wow. That's nuts.
You know, Kim, I'm sorry we didn't put it up on the board. We were just talking about it.
We should have asked for it. I don't know what you're doing.
Okay. Zachary? Zachary? Oh, yeah, here we... Calm down, people. Zachary, I want to thank you again, and I want to tell everybody, it's going to be on all the T-shirts and everything that the kids are, the kids are going to be getting. And we're using this opportunity, instead of putting it up on the screen, we're going to drive you to our Facebook post, so you can like it and our... Ellen is going to post the design online, so you guys can all check it out. So we're kind of going to, that's the way we're going to get it up there for everybody to see. Sorry I didn't have it up here for you. I apologize. But very excited. That was really nice. That's really a great logo. Thank you.
Just for others in the room who may not know what's going on here. So we have, actually, we're organizing a big event over at the West Seneca Soccer Complex this summer for every student that's entering kindergarten with us. So it's going to be a massive event, so, I mean, we average somewhere around 500 students per grade level. So, I mean, I don't know if we get five. It'd be great if we did. But just to think about how many T-shirts, plus everything that's organizing. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, we're partnering with the town, with, you know, our SROs. We have OTs and PTs are going to, we're going to have reading specialists, library, I mean, everyone's going to be there. So this shirt is going to be everywhere, I guess, is my point. Lots of, lots of people wearing this shirt, so...
Does it come in 3XL?
It comes in 3XL. Just one.
Just one. And if it rains, everyone's covered. Great, well, thank you. Okay, now that we have the Aiden, let's move on to East Senior High School presentation. Our World Language Department is going to be presenting. Yeah, I brought it. Whoa, excellent.
That's a big department.
That sure is.
That's half the audience.
Oh, hey, you are there.
So...
Do we use this to click?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for having us, and, you know, one of the things I know that, back from when I was an assistant with Dr. Sivoni, we've always thought is the best thing we can do as leaders is often to stay out of the way of the people who are really experts in their field and give them the freedom to do their best job with the kids. So we've been blessed at East Senior for years with a fantastic World Languages Department. And it goes on then when we were able to be the host side of town for our ENL population. We're upboards over, I don't want to steal any of Mrs. Sorenson's thunder, but over 80 students in the district from countries ranging from Poland to Afghanistan to Yemen and all in between. We've made the effort to have the flags flying for all their home countries in our building. So we've just been really, really lucky. It adds a nice element of additional culture to our, to our community at East Senior and in West Seneca. So again, we're fortunate to have that. But when we were talking about a department or a program to highlight, this was the first program we thought of, is, you know, the program that brings more of the world into our small corner of Western New York. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our chairwoman of our World Languages Department, Mrs. Kruger, and she'll talk about what we do in the World Languages Department. And then Mrs. Sorenson, who's down at the end, who was with us as a French teacher and now as an ENL teacher, will continue to talk about our ENL program. So I will turn it over to our experts in the field who do the hard work and great work with our children, so...
I am very small, but I have big personality, so that's kind of how it works. Good evening. I am Carrie Kruger. I am a French teacher and department chair at East Senior. We are here tonight to talk to you about our World Language Program, and despite the large contingent I brought with me this evening, we will be brief. Everyone is very excited to present their part of our program. So the World Language Program at East Senior, and it's mirrored at West Senior as well with the levels that we teach, we offer French and Spanish levels one through five. Level three, sophomore year, is the Regents' Equivalency exam. The state has left it to local districts to produce an exam that reflects the Regents, and they get Regents' credit for it. And we are one of the fastest tracks to a Regents' with advanced designation. So students going through their sophomore year, they get to check that box, and they're one step closer to that, that Regents' with that advanced honors on it. We have a Level Four and Five College Articulation Course with Hillbrook College. Students earn three credits finishing with us. It is a 201 intermediate-level course, so they blow right past 101 and 102. So for our students that are looking to minor in a language, typically, they only need five more classes after that point at the university level to get a minor. We've had many students minor and major. We currently have Dr. Skripchik at UB, who was one of our students, and he is a French professor there. So we have a number of students who've gone on and done some wonderful things. We also have a dual-language program, and we have students that take both French and Spanish. Oftentimes, they get the Regents' in both. I have Sophia Furlong here who wants to tell you about her experience.
Hello. The reason I began taking both French and Spanish is because I have a passion for the language, and the dual-language program allows me to indulge in the passion. One benefit of taking both languages is the knowledge of, of my knowledge of one language helps me in the knowledge of the other. Taking both also allows me to enjoy both cultures through both classroom experience and a variety of trips offered for both languages.
Like Mr. Winicki said, we get out of the way when we've got our superstars. That's why we have them with us today, is because these are our pride and joys, and we wanted them to have the stage tonight along with us because it's more about them than it's about us. So in the World Language area, we have brand-new standards coming out. The implementation for them will be starting in 2324. And we are working very hard to, with professional development and other things, to try and implement these. It's not the language that you might remember from high school. We are more focused on communication than we are verb conjugation. And that is the main focus of these standards is communication. Anchor standard one is communication. It's listening, reading, writing, but that's all communication. And our second anchor standard is culture, which is both understanding a culture as well as comparisons with products and processes. So we are, we'll be rolling these out along the way. Seventh grade starts in 2324, so that's our new standards, and that's a big thing for us. 1996 was the last time that they revised the standards. Our French and Spanish clubs are very vibrant, and the pandemic posed some, some interesting constraints on our, on our clubs who are used to going out and dancing and all kinds of things. But I have Aiden Kerr here, who is one of our Spanish Club officers, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about what our clubs look like.
So like she said, during the pandemic, it was difficult, but we were able to plan a lot of fun activities that also helped teach about, like, Spanish culture. We only could do online activities due to Google Meets being how we had meetings, and that changed how we did things in the past. Some of the activities last year that we could do included, like, arguing about an aspect of the culture, get the quiz game, other fun games like bingo, and then we got taught about Spanish foods along with easy ways to make them at home. But this year, we're back in the class and in person, so it's kind of like the past, how we were able to do it. But we managed online.
We also offer French and Spanish honor societies. Currently, we have quite a few students in there. We will be inducting new students in June. We'll be inducting about 50 of them into the, both the French and Spanish honor societies. In order to be in French and Spanish honor society, you need a 90 average in World Language as well as an 85 cumulative average. And you also need to take French or Spanish through your senior year. And we do all kinds of different opportunities to give back. We've done a Buckets of Love Drive for Journeys and Refugees Services, where we've collected cleaning supplies. We've done all sorts of things, including our World Language Learner Celebration. So Mia's going to talk to you about this in a second. We were able to pause instruction kind of for a day, and we... brought out French and Spanish in all of our classes, and we were able to do a service project as well.
Hi, I'm currently a senior at West Seneca East Senior High School, and Mrs. Kruger, what she did for Learn, like, World Language Day was offer hours for the Honor Society students, and I immediately jumped at that opportunity. Um, what we did for that is we, I went to the underclassmen classrooms that Mr. O'Donnell teaches, and we did multiple activities, for example, we did a bingo activity which had both French and Spanish words on it, and what I did for that was help read off the index cards and walk around and check all their boards, and then the next activity we did was a Kahoot, which was just a bunch of fun fact trivia questions that had both French and Spanish, and not to brag or anything, but I did get in the top three for that. Um, and then the next thing we did was, we did those Valentine's Day cards, because this did happen during the month of February, and we gave them to our senior center, and that was definitely one of my favorite activities to do for this, um, especially for the other kids as well, because it did feel a little nostalgic, because I think the last time I did a card like that was in elementary school, and so it was definitely nice to do a fun craft like that again, and I know the people at the senior center definitely appreciated it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mia, we were also able to donate, um, some cards to Sassy, um, my husband happens to work for them, um, and they went to some of, uh, the day programs, um, and they were able to give them, um, Valentines as well, um, so that was, that was also where our Valentines went. Uh, we have a life skills program as well at East. Um, we are able to offer an elective for our life skills students, you can see some of them there, I have them this year. Um, and, uh, it's a lot of culture, and it's a lot of pronunciation, um, and it's just a heck of a lot of fun, we did Mardi Gras, um, I dressed up with one of the students for Halloween, um, so, so we just typically have a lot of fun. Uh, I'm going to cede this part over to my colleague, Mr. O'Donnell, who's going to talk to you about our French Exchange Program.
I'm short too, if this works, thanks. I'm so lucky I get to work with Madame Kruger, she's fantastic. Uh, so, since, I believe it's two thousand and nine, was that the first picture we had? Uh, we've been running an exchange program with, uh, schools in France, uh, the first one was, was a collège, which is a middle school, but the kids are about our ninth grade age. And, uh, we have students who come to West Seneca, West Seneca East specifically, although we, we do involve some of the West Side students as well, and, uh, they, they stay with our families here, so we have, uh, most host families have one student, and I'm not going to steal your part, Paris, I won't talk about that. And then the idea is that we go travel there, so we're traveling there next year in April, and we have students coming here this November. Uh, before the pandemic hit, uh, we were lucky enough to host their superintendent, uh, for lack of a better, it's not exactly the same job, but it's, it's close. And, uh, he actually just got the nod to open up a brand-new high school in, um, in Western France, in Brittany, and they have an American program, so they, they have kids focused a lot more on learning English, and those students are coming here in November, and they're roughly sixteen, seventeen years old, so they're going to see how we do things. Uh, they're coming November third, there's a Bills game, but it's not a home game, so that's really too bad. I just can only imagine those kids jumping through tables and what they're doing. So, I worked with my counterparts over there, we have Madame Collet is going to be the head teacher this year, and then on the, to the right of her is, uh, my, my friend Madame Nikue, who was a bit of a mother goose to me when I lived in France, and of course, Madame Kruger, and Mrs. Sorensen helped a lot with this program in the past as well, we traveled to France together. Uh, but I'm going to let Paris talk about hosting French kids.
Hi, I'm a little taller than both of them, so. Sorry, not to flex. But, uh, I kind of got my thunder soul in a little bit too, so I'm kind of mad about that, but I had two French kids, I had twins. I'm a twin, I have a twin brother named Gabe, and, uh, we had twin students, boy and girl, like, me and my brother, and, uh, they were named Faustine and Roben. Uh, they were amazing to host, the experience is awesome, especially because I got to spend a lot of time with my brother, even though we are twins, we are very different, and we got to, um, kind of bond over having students that were twins also, because we got, we were forced to hang out with each other for once. But it was very nice, uh, learning about the French kids, they were very into basketball, um, so when they came over, we actually had a party for the final four, they came and they played basketball at my house, all the French kids, even some Spanish kids showed up, and it was, it was amazing, because the kids, some of them didn't even know French, and they, they learned and they spoke, and we all hung out, just like we were a bunch of kids, and we were just hanging out, and everyone was kind of like a big family, and it was so nice to see that, and, um, I will just never forget, we went to the Sabres game, uh, one night, we were like, yeah, we're going to take you to the Sabres game, and they were super excited, and all they wanted to do was be on the Jumbotron. These French kids, all they wanted to do, so we all piled up in the stands, a bunch of us, um, and we were cheering and we were yelling, and that moment when they finally got on there, and everyone just exploded, and they didn't, they've never been, never been to a hockey game before, uh, they were very into basketball, like I said, so they had no clue what was going on, but we taught them, we taught them about hockey, and we taught them about, um, what it's like being here, and it was so cool, even though having a language barrier, the experience you got to have with them, um, so that was really cool. Uh, I also got to go to Paris recently, um, so, it was amazing knowing actually how to speak French there, and I was in contact with my French students, and I talked to them, and they were very excited for me, and I got to bond over that, they were like, oh yeah, I've been there, and I was like, me too. Look, we're so French together, it was, it was very nice. But, um, it was nice to see the familiar, the familiar kind of places in Paris, um, that I learned about in class, um, all the, you know, you see the Eiffel Tower or whatever, but all the kind of historical stuff, and I was like, mom, I know this, I know where we are, and I got to speak and, like, order like a coffee, but also, like, when you're printing a boarding pass in French, that's pretty difficult, so, um, knowing how to do that was awesome, and, yeah, so both experiences going there and knowing what I was doing, and also having French kids come into my life, and I will never forget the memories I made with them and the experiences that we have. Thanks.
We are beyond lucky that Mr. O'Donnell brought that program to us, like, it's something that we can't, you know, we can't replicate, it's, it's just beautiful. Um, the New York State Seal of Bilinguism is, is where we're going to end up bridging over to Mrs. Sorensen, um, after this point, because we, um, have, uh, we are offering the New York State Seal of Bilinguism at both East and West. Um, in order to do this, a student needs to demonstrate that they are at an, well, an intermediate high level of language, in other words, that they are close, they would be understood extremely well by a native speaker. Uh, to do this, they have to have an eighty-five or higher in both English and the target language. Um, we have someone here who has multiple of those, um, as well, we also do this with our, uh, ELL population, who have to take special exams to prove that they have that grasp of langu, that, that level of language, um, those exams can take up to three and a half hours. Um, so, this is, this is a heavy-duty thing, and Mrs. DiAgostino is the advisor with me for the Seal of Bilinguism, she's going to tell you a little bit more about the capstone project that they have to complete.
Hi, good evening. We have fourteen students who successfully completed the Seal of Bilinguism, and the students worked with us after school, every day, preparing, rehearsing, and we are so amazed by their presentations. Um, they had to work with us, we learned from interpreters, and we learned a lot from the students, we cannot be so proud of them. This is Dasha, Dasha worked with us, and she completed her Seal of Bilinguism in English, Spanish, and Russian. Dasha?
Yeah, so, um, one thing I learned from the seal is how the process of knowing whether a person knows a language or not is much more than just being able to write or speak it. Um, it's also about comprehension, being able to answer questions in the best way possible, having the right tone, et cetera. And, um, another thing I learned is how important knowing more than one language is. Um, not only will earning the seal look good for colleges and jobs, but also knowing more than one language is good for the brain for several reasons, and, um, lastly, I would definitely recommend other students who are interested in other language to try to do the seal, because with all the hard work put into learning a language or two, or just like, knowing it from, uh, family, um, earning the seal would definitely feel very achieving, and it reflects them knowing a cool skill.
Um, and lastly, we have Matthew Fensell, uh, Matthew took us to school on the literature of Senegal, he did his entire, um, presentation on the literature and the literary history of the country, um, and it was amazing, um, and he's going to talk to you about his experience with the seal as well. We also have Paris and Mia who are also getting the Seal of Bilinguism as well.
Hello? Uh, I was a little jealous of that gentleman in the bottom-left of the screen there, until I realized that he was me. So, uh, I, I like his outfit and his beard, which I have seemed to lost. Now, for this speech, I'm going to try to tap into my, uh, inner Shakespeare to quell my nerves and also my handy-dandy note card. So, um, going into the Seal of Bilinguism program, I was just a little skeptical, but not because of the program, but because it was my senior year and I had contracted a very terrible illness called senioritis, I'm sure, you've all heard of it. And, um, but, but Madame Kruger, she encouraged me to, uh, to, to take up the program, and, uh, because I'm so interested in Shakespeare and literature, um, uh, I asked her saying, okay, well, can I, can I do the presentation on literature? And, uh, she said, of course, go ahead and do that. And, um, then I, I started working on the presentation, and because I had that literature element, I became very personally invested in this Francophone country, Senegal, that I had known nothing about beforehand, and it became sort of like this really personal experience where, by being able to articulate how I was feeling about, all right, Senegal, this, 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 this person, that person, about their culture, and it, it really kind of changed me, and, and it added to my perspective as to who I am in that sense. And, um, Madame Kruger made sure that we were all on track for, uh, for making sure that, you know, stuff in class was done, and stuff after school was done, and, um, when it came time for the big final, uh, presentation, I walked into the room, I was, I was a little nervous, maybe like I am now, and I saw, I was like, oh, I'm going to see a bunch of suits there, all right, I'm going to have to be a little, you know, tighten up my tie. But I saw Madame Kruger, Mr. O, uh, Mrs. Bell, and Mrs. DiAgostino, and that was, that was absolutely phenomenal, and it's such a, like, a heartwarming thing to be able to express myself in a really accomplished way in front of my teachers in both, uh, French and English. It was a little hard, you know, keeping the little switches, and I noticed when I was doing my English presentation, I would, you know, throw in a couple French words, it's very addictive to do, it's very fun, little French words. But, um, yeah, and I was able to really just get super hands-on with the material, and, um, it was such a lovely experience. And, yeah, I, I learned so much about a country that I, that I never thought I'd be interested in, and let alone that I really didn't even know about. So now I know, and I'm very grateful for that, so thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Ashley Sorensen, and I am the ESL teacher at West Seneca East Senior, and I apologize because I did add slides, but apparently they were not uploaded, so. Um, I will just speak to you about my experience. Um, I've been the district for fourteen years, and I had the amazing privilege of working with all these people, um, for seven years, teaching French. I very much miss working closely with them as a department, but I do have the amazing privilege of working with Teresa Hongs, who is the ESL teacher at East Senior. And if you see her, um, soon, please give her congratulations, because she just won the Western New York ESL Advocate of the Year Award. So, um, and it's very well-deserved, as you know. So, um, to speak about our program, we have about twenty-five students at East Senior that we are, um, providing the program for a range of levels and abilities, they come from different countries, it's very diverse, and among those twenty-five students, there's over nine languages that are spoken. So they're coming from a lot of different places. Um, I have to say, working with the ESL students, especially these last two years, they have, in a way, been a saving grace for me during, during COVID, because these students come every day, ready to learn with a smile on their face, they love coming to school, I mean, and these are juniors and seniors too that I'm talking about, these are not little children. Um, but they just really understand the value of education, a lot of these students are coming from war-torn places, they've experienced things that we can't even imagine, and yet, they know that getting an education and getting an education at West Seneca is going to provide them a successful future. So, um, I, I really have enjoyed working with them. I also am here to speak to you a little bit about our international club, um, we have an international club on both sides, East Senior and West Senior. At East Senior, we really highlight our ESL students, we highlight our diversity in our, um, school district, and we have guest speakers that come, but we also have the opportunity for our students to speak. Um, every month, we have a meeting, so this year, I had a student from Yemen who gave a presentation, and I also had a student from Bangladesh who just gave a presentation last week with his sister, and I partnered with Andy Agostino and her Spanish Advanced students, and we had a mini taste of culture. Unfortunately, because of COVID, um, protocol, I know that it's, you know, it's still there, although it's not, um, restricted as much, but we just were nervous about doing a full taste on, a taste of culture this year, but we're definitely hoping to bring it back next year. So we had a mini version of that with two guest speakers from Bangladesh. Um, I also brought in a friend of mine who is a Native American, his father is, um, from the Onondaga Tribe in Syracuse, New York area, and his mother is from the Shoshone Tribe, and he spoke to my students about Native American culture. And I was also fortunate to bring in a student that I had previously as an ESL student from Ukraine to speak to our students about what was going on there and to talk more about her culture. Um, it's been a great program to provide for our students, to expose them, um, to diversity, to learning about new cultures. Our faculty is involved very often with these programs, and to couple with the World Languages, it's just been an amazing opportunity to share that with our students. Thank you so much for your attention tonight, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Thank you.
Just extremely impressive, folks, I mean, honestly, I just, uh, I mean, you talk about diversity, you talk about trying to open up people's minds, you know, and I, I have to say, Ms. Kruger, um, she, actually, we, so, Mr. O'Donnell organizes this big trip, so the one year, when I was speaking to this, this superintendent back and forth, she was translating, but it was kind of an involved conversation, and at one point, she was translating in French to me and English to him, there was a lot of confusion going on, so. But you should have won an award that night, but honestly, that just, I appreciate everything that you're, you're all doing to really enrich our district, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's always great to hear from students, that's, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Lot, a lot of stuff goes on with the, the, I mean, my kids are on the West Side, but, uh, my top, my three oldest are all involved in French. Uh, my two of them are going on a trip somewhere, not in America, like, waiting to get passports and all that stuff, and, uh, my daughter's in eighth grade, is in the French club, and um, I make a habit of playing the Friends episode where Joey tries to learn French, and it really pisses her off. I was a Spanish guy in high school myself, uh, but anyway, I love it, and I, I really look forward to the day. Uh, one of my biggest dreams in, in life is being able to offer foreign language from kindergarten on up, um, that and instrumental, those are my two wishes if I had had that, and I, I think it's, um, I think it's great for kids, my daughter, who is nine, is in Spanish club after school, she stays after school now, so however the district offers that, again, great, but it's great seeing you guys up there and all the different things that you guys are doing, it's amazing.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming. And now I'm also realizing that you guys were the pig kids, and now my joke is even worse.
At least say it in Spanish.
Yeah, sorry. I just shouldn't have even done it.
She was speaking Span, French to me at one point, and English to him, slow down, Carrie.
Our Rory Club, um, helped with, um,
I guess you are.
Chloe was here.
Bye, great work.
They helped, they helped pay for stuff, or found a sponsor.
Nice.
She was, uh, she had a great time here. So, you're just going to be here, make me call you up? So, we'll move, we'll move, we'll move.
Waiting for the palm fronds.
There are no palm fronds. You're wearing the wrong colors then.
Can I save, save the best for last? No, I won't. One of the two best.
He's still sitting there.
I know, I know, I'm going to take a shot at him. One of the two best, top two high schools in Western. Um, West Senior High, and you are presenting?
We're presenting our general store and our, and one of our programs in our building.
Excellent.
So, a little bit of a dual presentation. Uh, this is our, our- This is our West General. We have something unique at our school. And it's something that is cultural to our building. I think it's very West Seneca E too, if that's a word. This is our West General Store. And if you watched the news yesterday, we were featured on Channel 7. We got a phone call at noon. I went to Kristen Wilman, who I'll introduce in a moment. She's really going to run the presentation. And I said, the news is coming in half an hour. I had no idea who was coming. They came with a camera. I'm like, oh my God, it's KBW with a reporter. And they stayed for about an hour. The reporter was truly blown away. And she was just watching the interaction with the students and the program and the store and how everybody's working together. And it was awesome to watch and to see what other people see. So this is my crew. This is my 1211 program. These are my students, these are our students that run the store. So we want these students front and center. We want them interacting. Many of them growing up have been in different programs where they don't interact socially with everybody else. Well, they're at the intersection, they're in the middle of the school. Every student comes by and sees the program and sees the store, interacts with the store. And I think if you look at how much money the school store generates, you'll see that it generates. And one of the things about the school store is every dime the students put in, we meet at the end of the year, we have a committee and we put it back into the school. I know you just passed the concession stand. I know we reduced some of the things like W's. I'm getting those W's through the school store. I'm getting them, don't worry. So I just want to show you some of the things that we've done in the past. It's not in taxpayer dollars. Students buy stuff, staff buy stuff, and then we put it right back into the school store. So I'm not going to be two hours and 25 minutes. This is going to be about 10 minutes. I'm turning it over to Kristen in about 45 seconds. All right. How do I turn, am I in charge of this? This right here? Okay. Okay. So a couple of things that major purchases is that the school store purchased years ago. I just want to update. Years ago, I went to Brian Schultz, I need $10,000 in treadmills. He laughed. We went to the school store. Those are in the weight room. They benefit every student that goes into our school. I used to toggle together desks for a conference room. Tom Schreiber at the time, just, we use the conference room. Students use it. We have to be professional. Let's buy a conference. So that's outside my office. We use it, students use it. We have students eating lunch there. Craigers seen at the time, years ago, we want West Senior. When you walk into West Senior, I want kids to be proud. We all do. If you're proud in the building, you don't vandalize, but also you walk taller. You know you're awesome. You know what you just said, Mr. Brinkley? Best for last. I want every, no, I'm just saying, I want every kid walking out of West Senior going, this was awesome. I love this place. Part of it is this. We outfitted, every room has, it says main office, every room has a blue and gold, W's all over, school store did this. I couldn't come to you and say, hey, I need $8,000 for signs. You would have laughed. Right? Eight, bless you, eight times nine buildings, that's really what I'm asking for. Because you can't give West Senior $8,000 for signs and not anybody else. So we funded all this. Everywhere, those signs, the Seneca West Athletics, we do that through the school store. And again, at the end of the year, we have a concession stand that we have to outfit. We also have a little weight room project that we're going to work on with the athletics. Kristen, I'm going to have you talk about some of the newer stuff.
So I took over West General this year for the first time with my 1211 Life Skills class. I'm Kristen Wilman at West Senior. Some of the things we really wanted to do this year was things that could be for the whole school, fun things for the kids together. Because last year, kids weren't even in school for the majority of the year. They weren't together. So we tried to come up with some fun things that we could do running through the bookstore. One of the things we did was a mini Super Bowl party in my classroom. Here is a bulletin board from the room. Students throughout the whole school could come in and choose which team they thought was going to win. And then at the end, we took all the people that voted for the right team, put their names on like a little spinning thing online, and we chose one person to get a gift certificate to the bookstore. We do a lot of gift certificates, which I'll get to in a second. But beside from that, we had like a little Super Bowl party in my room. We had pizza and snacks and cornhole. And it wasn't just for my students. We opened it up to any of the teachers who wanted to bring their students down. This was really good for my Life Skills kids because even though they're in the bookstore, interacting with all the kids on a daily basis, it's really just a quick, hi, how are you? What can I get you? Thanks for coming to the bookstore. So they had kids come down in the gen ed population and they got to really interact with them for a while, play cornhole, eat food, have really good conversation. I really enjoyed the Super Bowl party. I'd really like to have a whole school one next year when the Bills are in the Super Bowl. So getting ahead of myself, but we would like to do some more fun things like this. We also do a lot of gift certificates, like I mentioned. We donate gift certificates from the store to the character trade of the month that the West Blue Committee does. We did post prom gift certificates. We also bought the big prizes for post prom this year for after junior prom. And basically, anytime someone comes to us and says, we need some gift cards, we're more than happy to give those in dollar values, in apparel. We just raffle things off. For the glow party that our seniors put on, we did gift certificates for that as well.
What was this, the junior post prom gift?
What was it? So there was, the big prize was a 50 inch TV. And we had also.
Was it a book? This was?
Oh, yeah. The big prizes. So all the kids that won were very happy.
Did that one, it was kind of hopping around at the end of the night? And Tammy Bryce said, hey, do you want anything? No, well, guess what? You want 50. The kid just beamed from there.
Right. So again, we're able to use this money to give it back to the students, do fun things for post prom, like I said, the character trade of the month, Super Bowl parties, things like that. We sponsor two students in the Students of Excellence Center. This is one of the students that I sat with this year. He is actually a student that works in the bookstore, even though he's not in my 1211 class. Basically, in the beginning of the year, he just wanted to find something to help him work on, money skills. When he got a job, working at a cash register, taking money, giving money back, making change, he came to us and said, like, what can I do? And I said, let's go to the bookstore. That's going to be awesome. He's had to become really close friends with my students. He works in there with us almost every day. Now he has a job, so he's not there quite as often after school, but we're happy he has a job. But we miss him at the bookstore as well. So we sponsor two students for Students of Excellence. We try to also do some fun things to get all the kids involved. I'm going to go with Lucky last. But at Easter time, we raffled off six chocolate bunnies, a big one and then five small ones. All the kids had to do was come make a purchase at the bookstore. They didn't have to buy raffle tickets. Just anything you purchase, you can put your name on a ticket. And then we pulled right before Easter break, the chocolate bunnies. We did guess the candy corn at Halloween. So the same type of thing. They didn't have to pay to actually guess, just anytime they came and purchased something, they made their guess. Whoever was the closest, somebody actually got it spot on, won the candy corn. Also, again, a gift certificate to the bookstore. You can see in the background some of the stuff that we sell. We do like little graduation things. We have little monkeys and stuff for like little, with little hearts on them for Valentine's Day. And then for St. Patrick's Day, we did Lucky. Lucky was a leprechaun that hid around the school every day in March. He would hide somewhere different. We would hide him in the morning and the kids would have to find him. And whoever found him could come to the store, bring him to the store, and they would get free drink, snack, and a little like West Bookbag that we had. We did not think that this was going to be as popular as it was. We had kids trying to like get out of class to go find Lucky and they couldn't find him.
I had four senior boys, football players, walking around looking for Lucky. So I had to make it edict, you can only look for Lucky between classes. Fifty kids out of study hall, fifty kids out of study hall looking for Lucky.
Which was, that might be one year only, but we were going to try to.
They were starting well.
They had. They had a great time. They did. They had a blast. One day we couldn't find him, we found out he had been kidnapped. Someone was holding a hostage in their book bag until block two. So the kids were very stressed out that day because they knew that he was out of the hiding spot, but they didn't know where to hunt. I had to send emails every day, you know, Lucky's been found, you can stop looking for him. One really cool thing though that came out about this, one of the girls came to me at the bookstore the one day and said, has Lucky been found today? They would come up and ask. And we had a sign we would put out that said Lucky's been found. And she said to me, you know, my attendance hasn't been great this year. March has been the month that I've been in school the most because I want to come and find Lucky. So if nothing else, we have one student come to school more to look for Lucky. So we just wanted to do, like I said, just fun things because, you know, it was, it's been a very different school year, the past two years. Now we can be all back together, we're able to do these fun things. We purchased a bunch of new apparel this year. And we had some old clothing that had been kind of like outdated. We went and purchased a whole bunch of new West gear. One of the things we do is we give some of our apparel whenever we have transfer students coming in. We give them the new apparel to say, welcome to West. Here's your new, like, here's a home for you, we want to give this to you. And we also will donate clothing to any families that maybe are in need. So we will always, people can always come to us and ask, you know, I need this, this child is in need of this, or we have a new student, we're more than happy to do that as well.
You also took our slogans, we leave blue and go west. And now every kid is walking around in school with a shirt or a sweatshirt with our slogan on. So that's.
And staff. I got them.
And staff. But that's key. We have a lot of transfers. And we meet with all those students that transfer in over the summer, the counselors meet. And we're able to, on the first couple of days of school, we have a little luncheon, the school store buys, a little breakfast. And then we give them gear, we'll give them a pen, we'll give them a sticker, we'll give them a shirt. Kids are, I already got them, they got them like it. You're awesome. So here we go. But Kristen's able to do that. And we're able to do that within our own school, make these kids feel part of the school right off the bat.
And our plans for moving forward, we, our senior class does not have a lot of money because they didn't get to do the homecoming dance due to the fact that of COVID, they didn't have homecoming the year that they sponsored it. We are going to sponsor the food trucks on Senior Day, which is June 10. I mentioned the prizes for post prom, the TV, signage with the concessions at the football field. We also, as Mr. Brinker talked about earlier on, came together last week after the tragedy that happened in Buffalo. And Rio Harden and I, who also runs a bookstore with me, we kind of got together that weekend and said, what can the bookstore do? How can we help these families in Buffalo, even just in a little way? So what we did last week was one day we said, 100% of our sales are going to, we're going to find an organization and donate. We ended up choosing Feed More Western New York. We raised $1,700 that we gave to Feed More, just in that one day. So kids were coming up, they were buying, we were telling them, wait to buy apparel until, you know, the next day because 100% of the sales are going to go to this. So drinks and snacks and apparel, they were staff and students, everybody was coming up. They cleaned us out. We had no food at the end of the day. But we were able to raise, like I said, $1,700. Kids were coming up and just handing us money too. Like, I don't even want a shirt, here's a $5 bill. I just want to help. And that's what the news came to talk about yesterday was this fundraiser. It showed me how generous our students are at West. And I just felt really lucky to be part of such a good school and such a good community that everybody just wanted to help in any way.
So if we have a student that needs a capping gown, we know it's a bookstore. If we have a student that needs a yearbook or a prom ticket, we know. We work with the counselors. This is what West Seneca does. We're not going to leave a kid out of the prom. We have a student that had a fire, we had to get some gear, some apparel, some stuff for their home. So we get together and we're able to draw it out of the school store. This is what we do, for the school, for the community. And again, the pride that the kids get coming into the school, it's part of everything. Everyone's part of this. And it's packed all day long. Except for lunch, you know, allowed to buy stuff in the school store very much.
And everything that was just said, you don't hear curriculum, you don't hear things like that. Because at the beginning of the year, we really preached relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. That was a Brad Johnson quote that we put up in every room. And that bookstore is everything right there. The curriculum happens in the classroom. Watching these kids around that school store, when you're standing at the crossroads and there's a line coming out because kids just want to be there, they want to interact. Those are the experiences they have. Lucky, he brought a kid there for the whole month of March. Guess what? Some learning happened there too. And that's the thing that happens. It's one of the greatest things at West is watching those kids go up there. And I mean, that $1,700, I teared up when you hear that because it's unbelievable. It's unbelievable what West does. And it's all of West Seneca too. And we're welcoming, when you have kids from East walking over and finding things as they're going through too. And it's just an amazing community that's created there. And, you know, you do a great job, the kids do an unbelievable job in there. If you ever want to see it, come on now, you know? Not just not during.
It's hot chocolate, everything.
Want it, get it. Come get it. My kids are, they really, my students are really the heart and soul of that store. So come see them, they will get you whatever you need. They're really wonderful.
You have ramen?
Long weekend.
I worked the concession stand at one of the track meets recently and the big, I couldn't believe, ramen, like it was huge seller.
Huge seller.
It's pretty cool.
And the hot pockets.
The hot pockets.
The hot pockets are big.
No, the uncrustables.
So do you have, are the hot pockets, do you have a microwave?
We have two microwaves, which, I forgot about it, the school store bought two hot, two microwaves for each cafeteria. So kids make hot pork, they have ramen, their regular lunches, they stand in line and do their warming up. Yeah, I forgot about that. That was Tom that purchased the microwaves to warm up the food.
We're open after school too. So when the kids are there for, you know, sports or staying for clubs, they can come get a snack as well.
And when it gets hot, she'll bring in all the Freezy Pops. So the kids come down and teach you, go get Freezy Pops. It's 85 degrees up there. So and then in the winter, it's hot chocolate.
Still hot chocolate. It's hot.
Right. So that's our program.
Thank you.
Because I could talk about it for literally 12 to 15 minutes.
I love that your 1211 kids do it. Love that, that's awesome.
And like I said, they get, then they get to talk to all of their kids in school and get to know them. And everybody knows them. They work at the bookstore, you know? So it's just a great.
Great idea.
I think you guys should hide something new every month.
No.
Except for my possible one year only.
Please do not let 20 kids from the hallway look for Lucky. This is the time.
Please text Mr. Brinker your picture when you find him.
Well, you had, teacher, a sub suit teacher's got 15 kids coming up to him, we need to go find Lucky. Oh, okay.
They know what to do.
It was like a sport for them. It was more than I can just get a free snack. They were like, I have money, I just want to find him.
10 o'clock, the bell rang, I'm like, it's 8 o'clock, are we, don't look for Lucky.
Maybe come to school early.
I was just thinking that.
They did and we hit them too easy at first, so they found him right away. It was like the bell would ring at, you know, at 7:20, 7:21 and the kids are ringing like, you were like, we have to, we have to really hit some better spots, which is what, you know, caused problems because then he was really hidden and the kids were trying to find him. But they had fun and that's what it's all about.
And did you hide them in common areas?
Yes, so.
Not in like a classroom?
No, it was not allowed in any classrooms, any bathrooms. It was only in areas where every student had access to. So some days it was a little difficult to find another hiding spot just because it was either like in the open.
It's like the shelf fell.
Or we, so that's originally where I cut it from, it was like the Alpha and Shell when I was an elementary teacher. Also, this is only my second year in the district, my first year taking on the bookstore, but me being in the bookstore, I've really gotten to know a lot of the students. So I wouldn't have gotten a chance to meet so many of them if I was just in the classroom with my, you know, four students all day. So I got to meet a lot of the students and I work a lot of the events, but really it's been the bookstore. People come up to me, someone at the gym today actually came up to me and was like, hi, Miss Bookstore Lady, and I was like, how are you? They do know me from being in the bookstore a lot, so that has been really great for me too, to get to know all the students in the school.
And I said, you miss bookstore lady.
You start any conversation with a kid about Oreoism, what you're buying, you get coffee and it's a nice little, it's part of our school.
Fielding off emails, why are there no Uncrustables? Why are you one minute late opening today?
Uncrustables kind of have a crust on it and everything.
Well, they're, they're like, put together.
They are very hard to get, they sell right now, so when we get them, they sell out within the day.
Supply changes.
Yep.
Excellent.
Well, thank you for working with the community.
Thank you so much.
And having, having both high schools, having both high schools here, I felt to mention that I was, I was honored, lucky enough to attend dinner. Was that last week, the one at Salvator's?
Yeah. Thursday.
Last Thursday, where they honored the top three students from each, Wednesday?
Thursday, Wednesday, yeah.
Both, both high schools had the top three students honored at Salvator's, had a great dinner last Thursday. I was honored to attend with both of them, what a great, what a great group of kids we had, I believe it's the top three, right?
Yep, scholastic achievement recognition dinner, it's the Erie Niagara School Superintendent's Association puts it on every year.
Yeah, it was great and there was kids from all high schools throughout the entire area and it was, it was a lot of fun. So I just want to congratulate both high schools on those kids, their great, great evening. Think we're good, we want to do our five-minute recess and then roll into our next group of stuff? All good, okay, we'll do a five-minute recess.
Thanks everyone.
Yeah, we're back.
Just to say, if anybody's watching from home, the picture on the screen right now is, this is Zach Waldorf's, that's the, that's the image that's on the T-shirt. So for the kindergarten, moving up to kindergarten transition program, so that's the, that's the symbol that's, or the picture that actually won the contest, it's going to be all of our T-shirts, so.
I, I think the picture on the other side should be the one on the T-shirt, that's, that's some excitement.
He looks very excited, yeah.
Yeah, very happy, okay. Thank you for the recess, we'll move on to new business. If I can get a motion to move on 5A through 5C.
I'll motion.
Motion to accept, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Diane, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Move 7-0. Can have a motion to accept D, 5, I'm sorry, 5D?
I'll move.
Motion from Diane to accept, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Jody, discussion on 5D? Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Any, well, let me do, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
One, two, three, those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Four, so the motion is not accepted, 3 to 4. I can have, do a motion, if I can have a motion on 5E, please?
I'll move.
Pete, 5E, motion to accept 5E, may I have a second?
I'll second.
G M, all in favor, any discussion on 5E?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question about this, so in looking at the contract, it looks like it's 40,000 for one year, not two.
It's, it spans the two years, so it spans two school years, so it started like December and it goes through the following, like next January.
12 months then.
So it's a 12-month contract then?
Yes.
Okay, so we're voting to approve this now, even though the work has already been started?
Yes, so they didn't have, and I know I'd mentioned this in an email, but basically they didn't have, typically speaking, they would just give us an invoice or give a district an invoice. So we looked at it and said, this looks more like, it should be a contract. So the work had begun, so then we went back, that's what I'd emailed, it just went back to say, we'd like to go through the board process with this. So that's why I said, geez, you know what, this probably should have been something that should have been approved through a contract, so.
And then because of the amount too, the amount's quite high, 40,000, so, yep. But the work has already been started and.
Correct.
Right, we're on the hook for that work anyways, so, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes 7-0. May I have a motion to accept 5F, please, or may I have a motion on 5F?
I'll move.
Pete, motion to accept 5F, and I would like a second, please?
I'll second.
Jody, any other discussion? Any discussion?
I thought they had a great presentation when they were here.
Okay.
We have, I think we have personnel that can handle it rather than go into this expenditure.
Okay, I understand that, and I, and I, and I don't think our personnel, in my opinion, couldn't handle it. I personally feel I want someone who's not involved in the district running the nuts and bolts of it. That's why I support it and I respectfully, you know, we can still be friends and disagree, but I do understand your, your point behind it, I think.
I don't think the expenditure should be made, so.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, just, you know, my, my opinion, I was on a committee where people from the district ran it and I don't think anything positive really came out of that, so, that's just kind of why I like having, so and again, they're not making any decisions, they're just helping facilitate. So just, you know, again, I totally get it.
Money doesn't grow on trees and we have personnel that can really handle this, so that's my comment.
I understand, that's good. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I, no, can I, I'm sorry, I didn't, two?
Aye.
Two or three, three, okay, those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Four, okay, so the motion fails, 3 to 4. May I have a motion on 5G, please?
I'll move.
Diane, move to accept 5G, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I'll second.
You'll second? And any discussion? Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Move 7-0. And I always get this wrong, informational documents, may I have a motion for 6, please?
I'll move.
Pete, 6, Pete to accept 6A, and you may have a second, please?
I'll second.
Molly, 6, any discussion on financial reports?
No, do we have to approve these?
No, I don't think we do, and I think I ask every time and.
You do.
Someone, usually, I guess I should have turned your way, Melissa, sorry. So then we'll just, all in favor, 7-0, how's that? Board of Education discussion? We'll start with, change the June 7th board meeting from East Senior Odd to West Elementary Gym. Anyone got a problem, like anyone?
I'd actually like to also potentially change the date of the meeting.
Okay, well, let's start with that part and then we'll go into the date part. I kind of pseudo-requested this change, right?
The date?
Is this the one with, no, not the date, no, just the location.
Yeah.
I kind of like the way we had our board meeting down in the gym and this is where we do the retiring, the retiring ceremony for the people that are retiring. And when we do it in the East Senior Auditorium, we're up front at some tables and the meeting part of it is very difficult. I personally, we're not, we're, we're not having, we can't have a productive meeting facing out, the tables aren't really able to be curved a whole lot. And I really liked the way we ran our board meeting down in the gym that day so we could do our presentations, then those people, we can have a reception with our little intermission and then we can allow them to leave and go back and have our meeting. So that's why I requested the change, like just to say, hey, can we talk about it? And Nicole, seems logistically it would work, so any, anyone have an issue?
No, I, I think I just asked to make sure that there was nothing going on with West Elementary that day, but I think that it was clear, as long as the calendar is clear, we're not interfering.
Yeah, I don't want to cancel, I don't want to cancel something at some time.
Right.
No.
I'm looking at the date right now, it looks like it's just West Middle and East Middle that have concerts.
Okay.
Great, um, do we vote on that or do we just?
We're voting to move the venue.
Okay, we're going to move the venue, may I have a motion to move the venue?
I don't, I don't think you have to vote.
We're just cool moving the venue.
You just have them somewhere else.
Anyone have an issue with it?
No.
We're good, okay. So now I will have Jody bring up some date changes she's requesting.
Can we move the date of the June 7th? I would like to motion to move the date of the June 7th meeting as well as the reorganization meeting so that all board members can attend.
Can we do them separate?
Sure.
So we could discuss it, June 7th, do we, is that like a?
Are we able to, with it being the retire, I was not aware that it was retired.
Maybe invitations or something.
I mean, you may just not get as many people there if they were planning on a particular date, that's all. So I mean, we, we can change the meeting, it's, it's not.
Can we change the meeting and not give them a re-recognition? I mean, I don't need to miss that, but I have to miss the June 7th, my mom.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can move it, I, I guess what I'm saying is you just, you know, I don't know how many people we have planned on coming, to be quite honest with you. So, and just, you might just not get as many people, so you're saying do the recognition, but change the, like have another meeting, is that what you're?
Have the board, however it works best for everybody, just, the date is bad.
Okay.
For me and I really like to be at that board meeting.
So you're saying, so just do the recognition, but not do the meeting with like, you know, voting and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that possible?
Is there, I'm, and I apologize, is there stuff, is there stuff going on at the board, like is that a board meeting that we have a lot going on?
It's a regular board meeting.
It's a regular board meeting, so there'll be like agenda items and things like that for approval.
Okay.
Do we have a work session scheduled for June?
21st.
21st.
The 21st, couldn't we kind of combine? Because, because a work session isn't required by law.
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't.
But we could combine.
Because it's still before the end of the school year, we just combine, even if we move it up a week, so it's in the middle if we had to, or whatever.
The only.
Well, the 14th is the bachelorette.
Yeah, it's my, like, having a senior, there's literally something going on every single night.
I, I don't know that, but I'll trust Molly that my kid probably.
It's every night, like I'm, yeah, I'm missing.
My, my schedule is just everything right in my across the whole thing.
The only thing I would say, there's only one item, it's actually a personnel item related to our new ELA director that we were looking to try to do the 7th and that just, the issue is going to be notice that they have to provide at their current location, that's all. So they have to, I mean, they, they have to give some notice officially in their current district if they're leaving, so this is related to the, the new ELA director position?
Yeah, so it'd be the 7th versus the 21st.
Yes.
So it's a two-week difference.
There's, there's nothing in this week that works for anybody, the 8th, the 9th?
I can't do it. Well. Could we do a, could we hold a special?
I was, I was, you, you, I was just going to suggest have that one item on there, if you wanted to move everything off, I just wanted to say, you could.
Yeah, if we just do that one item.
That one item.
Recognition and the one item.
Right.
Certainly do that, I don't, I don't think that's an issue.
Then we can hang out with the people more with the recognition and everything too, yeah.
Just have a short meeting. If you just do the one item and then everything else gets put on the 21st.
The 21st, yeah.
That would be fine with me.
I'm cool with that, you guys are willing to do that.
Yeah.
I would rather do that than move, move it to a different day in the.
We just picked these dates so long ago and things come, you know.
Oh, tell me about it.
Can we just approve?
So what?
As per June 7th, we can do that now, can't we?
So you just have a resolution, yeah, I'm looking over Dr. Cervoni. I mean, I think we could probably add it right now, we just.
Would we want to do that though?
Yeah.
We could do a Sarah.
Just push it back by two weeks.
Yeah. We don't want to mess with the notice.
No, I would rather have it on the, we could have a quick.
Are you worried about missing the meeting or the retirement or both?
The meeting, I think she's worried about missing the meeting.
Obviously.
Both, but.
Both, but yeah.
I retract that question.
Yeah, please retract the question, I, I'm very sad to miss both, but, yeah, I'm trying not to miss the meeting.
I, I would just recommend if we could keep just that one item.
Just one item, that would be okay, we could do it like that.
If there's one item on it and then just do it next week, that would be great.
Yeah.
Everybody's cool with that?
Yeah.
That's fine, yes.
Yeah, anything crazy pops up, we can.
So what, what is happening June 7th?
So it's the retirement thing and then probably one item on the agenda.
And I think the top 10 we're going to come today.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
There's a lot of recognition.
From each side of school are coming.
So we're still going to have.
It could be quite, it could be quite the party.
At 6 o'clock.
Yeah, you've got a couple of students from the asset program, you're going to have, yeah, top 10, you're going to have retirees, so.
We always have a shorter meeting that night anyway, I mean, of business, you know, it's.
We try, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I remember we just went off to the side and voted on something and came back. So we still.
Thank you guys, I appreciate that.
So they're still on on the 7th.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's at 6 o'clock.
Down in the gym. And it's the same setup as they did for the December 7th meeting essentially, I mean, you have plenty of space down there to work with, so.
Yeah, that, that worked out well. Are we cool with that? Okay, I know you made a motion, but I don't think we need to follow through on.
No.
I don't know.
Okay, so there was a second?
The reorganization meeting is scheduled and not all board members can attend and I think we need all current and new board members here. So it's not me that can't attend this one, but I'm just Diane.
Well, I scheduled my Hawaii trip so that I could be at the reorg, so, so.
Just out of curiosity.
Post, we are leaving the next day.
Did anyone ask Vince if he could make the reorg meeting yet, is that like an official?
I think they know that when they're, right?
I didn't know what the reorg meeting was when I first, my, I came to the first board meeting after I was elected.
I'm just asking out of, your coincidence, like, wouldn't it be funny if he's like, oh yeah, by the way, I can't.
So you're leaving on the 8th?
Right, how did you guys find out?
But she's talking about having it on the 1st.
She's talking on the 1st.
Yeah, can we do it on the 1st instead, and you should be up to school.
Yeah, I have family coming into town to stay with us, but I can make that happen.
We could do it at 9 o'clock in the morning, it's just a reorg meeting.
That would be better.
Why not on the 1st?
On the, yeah, what's?
I don't have Vince's.
Okay, what is the 1st, it's a Friday?
Because we can't, I checked with Jan earlier, we can't have it before July.
Right, we can't, right, and you have to have it between a certain amount of time, right?
The first 10 days or something?
Right, the first 10 days of the month of.
So then it would have to be prior to.
We could just all go to Hawaii with you.
Yes.
Or you could come to Italy with me.
Those are two good options.
My kids are going to Italy at some point.
So the reorg is on a Thursday?
It was scheduled for Thursday because the 5th was the end of the holiday.
Yeah, that's always the trick here, it's always either before the holiday or after the holiday, so, but the reorg is Thursday.
If we could do it Thursday.
It's Thursday the 7th?
Thursday the 7th.
That's weird.
I know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Why did it go, why is it later this year, because didn't we do it?
I don't know who, who assigned it the 7th.
I don't either.
We didn't talk about that.
No.
We didn't set it.
Yeah, I don't know if we did that way back in the very beginning.
I know there's thousands of people watching.
Until June.
Okay. So can we move that to the 1st?
Can I check, can I check with my family before I go to the July 1st, just in case I have family coming in?
Can we all agree that July 7th is bad?
I do have family coming into town, so that's going to be a pain in the butt for me.
Okay, can we just, can we discuss it further? Before we make?
When do you leave Diane?
The 5th.
So, okay, so that, I was going to say that Tuesday, but.
Yeah.
I feel like we talked about it because the 5th was the day after the holiday, I don't know, that was.
That might have been what it was.
Maybe we did bump it because the 5th was there.
Because the 5th was the day, I feel like we had this conversation last year in July, but who knows what happened last year in July anymore.
You didn't plan it for us.
We did not?
Nope.
You guys just popped it on the calendar for us? I don't.
Melissa's like, wow.
I know that last July, I was saying to you guys, doing the reorg thing, you know, Nicole wants you to pick, you know, dates through the rest of the year and I think you only got like two months left, so we did it at some point. Okay. Yes.
All right, can we just like discuss it again?
Like this isn't rocket science, we can all go back to our respective things and.
And figure out what.
I'm sure Nicole, if she's, you know, got some input on that too and.
But it has to be between July 1st and July 10th. That only leaves us.
Like that's a thing?
Well, no, not even.
That leaves us literally, I mean, we can do it.
Pete, you've been awfully quiet on this.
Five days.
Don't care, why do you do it? Okay, what are you doing?
It's actually five days.
We could do it virtually.
Is the, is the reorg meeting where we elect like the new president and all that stuff?
There's a ton of stuff.
Virtually.
I don't want to do it without everybody here.
Yeah. And do we have, I mean.
And I'll be at the airport, so.
So here's a question. We have to elect that day?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the reorg.
Because they take, they take over that meeting.
Yeah, I didn't know like if anything was happening that first week. Is that, is that the rule?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know we got to swear in and all that stuff.
Yeah, but you have to. We take arrows, we swear Vincent.
Diane, I'm trying to buy any more time as president, but I'm.
Feel it's important for you to be there?
I'm more than happy to.
I really don't care, you know? Because the reorg is just, you know, I mean, it would be nice to be here, but.
Would you be able to like leave, like committees that you wanted to be on, any intentions that you had, like could we do that?
Let somebody speak on your behalf? Nominate somebody to speak on your behalf?
Yeah, you can do that.
Tell them what you're willing to accept and, like committees, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because if we, if you have the agenda and we know what.
And I know it's ahead of time.
What you know it's ahead of time.
Well, that's a good idea.
You know what I mean?
We could do that.
We could do that, because then you'd be.
Yeah. Because most of it is just, you know.
I'm getting in at one o'clock in the morning and I'm going to come here, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
It's too many lawyers, like, you know.
You appoint Will.
Form or something like that with technology these days, you know, it seems like it would be a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I could work that out, I guess, ahead of time. I'm kidding, not me. Thank you for asking.
I attended one from Cape Cod, I remember.
Yeah, and I remember, well, it was in New York.
No, I think that was a retreat, wasn't it?
Didn't, um, no, yeah, I remember my back was out. No, Mary Bussie like had beamed in one, two.
She beamed in from like a camping trip down to Florida.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yep.
That'll be in Rome and so that'll be six hours difference.
No, and that's, yeah.
An interesting board meeting.
I'm at the Vatican Museum and so.
It's a long one, too.
Diane can vote with the white and black smoke through the.
Oh, that's a Pope.
Oh, never mind, never mind.
We're not that important.
Just trying. Okay, so we're going to all, we're just kind of, we're pretty sure that we can leave it, but we'll all just double check and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.